All right, welcome back to another National Real Estate Exam Prep. Today we're going to talk about contracts. And what we're going to do today is we're going to do some mini lessons, if you will. We're going to go over exactly the topic that you're going to see on your National Real Estate Exam, followed by two questions that line up with that topic, give you the answer, as well as give you the explanation as to why the answer is the answer, as well as on some of them, why the answer isn't the other answers. So let's jump into this thing and we're going to start with the effects of the statute of fraud. So the statute of frauds is a legal mandate requiring specific contracts, including those related to real estate, to be in writing and signed in order to be legally enforceable. This requirement aims to prevent fraud and reduce misunderstandings. So in a real estate transaction, I want you guys to note this. Leases that exceed one year, they have to be signed by both parties. And while I don't have this question popping up next, I do want you to be aware. I do think you're going to see a question. And this question is going to say, which one of these does the statute of frauds not apply to? And that will be for leases that are under a year. All right, so leases that are less than one year do not require to be in writing to be enforceable. All right, so I actually think that's going to be a test question that you're going to see. So again, the statute of frauds is required for everything else that we do, right? There are contract to buy and sell, you know, the exclusive rights, all those different pieces. They must be in writing to be enforceable. The only, only document in our world that I think that you will see on the exam that does not require to be in writing to be enforceable, or the statute of frauds, is a lease agreement for less than one year. And I truly do believe you're going to get that as a test question. So here's two examples of test questions that I think that you could actually see around this topic. So the first question is this, which of these requires the real estate sales contracts to be in writing? Well, obviously, we're on the subject, so we're talking about the statute of frauds. So if you jumped on A, that means you read it too fast. And that's what they're going to do to you on the exam is they're going to set you up in some of those instances. And the reason why it is D, the statute of frauds, is the statute of frauds mandates that all transfers of real estate interest must be in writing, except for leases for one year or less. The statute of limitations determines the time period within which lawsuits can be initiated. TILA, the Truth in Lending Act establishes disclosure requirements for lender fees. And caveat imperum is a principle, meaning buyer beware. So your second one, as we're looking through this, is under the statute of frauds, all contracts for sale must be in writing to be enforceable. And again, the statute of frauds requires that real estate sales contracts be documented in writing, but it does not specify who should draft the agreements or the types of forms used. While earnest money is commonly inside of the transaction, it's not because of the statute of frauds. So while we're looking at this, again, we don't need it to be on a approved form, right? Because the statute of frauds doesn't say like, this is the form that it needs to be on, because every state is different, all right? And so we are talking about the national side of things. While we know like in different states like Colorado, for example, we have to use, you know, rule F because of pre-printed forms that we are given. In different states, they have different requirements. So your second subject, right, another subject that you're going to be getting on your national exam is void, voidable, and unenforceable contracts. All right, so avoid contract is just this. It's a contract that is invalid from the outset and cannot be enforceable by either party. This may occur if the contract was created in a way that makes it legally invalid, or if one party lacked capacity, such as being a minor, or unable to comprehend the agreement. So the minor one, the minor one's interesting, because what we typically knows this, a minor would be more of a voidable contract in my eyes, right? Because it's not necessarily void because of their age, yet at any point in time, they could raise their hand, they could say, hey, you know what? I've actually been taken advantage of here because of how old I am. So when we're looking at voidable, a voidable contract is initially valid, but may be canceled or upheld by one party due to specific legal reasons. For example, if there was a misrepresentation, mistake, or failure to disclose important information, one party has the option to either enforce or void the contract. So that's actually very interesting. So when you're looking at a voidable contract, this is what I want you to keep in mind. Again, we can go back to the minor piece. Yet, I want you to think of, let's say that someone does make a misrepresentation. And let's say that one party lied. And typically, I would think, let's just go on the seller side of things, the seller lies. The buyer has the right to void the contract, right? The buyer, the buyer could say, hey, you know what, we were lied to, we were given false pretenses. But at the end of the day, they might say, you know what, this is still a great deal, and I want to go through with the contract. Or you could be in like duress, right? And so when I'm thinking about a voidable contract, maybe you're under duress at that time, right? And so we know that we need to have people that are giving consent and that they need to be of like clear, clear and sound mind when they're going through and signing a contract. Well, if they never bring it to light because they actually like the deals after they get a chance to think about it, that's voidable. At any point, they could raise their hand, they say, you know what, hey, I was bullied into selling this deal, or whatever that may look like. Yet, at the same time, they might not ever say anything. So that's voidable, right? Void, absolutely missing a legal component. We find out, contract's done. Voidable, someone actually has to raise their hand, right? Something weird could be happening, but yet someone actually has to raise their hand and say, hey, I want to cancel this contract, I want to void this contract because of this. And then you may see unenforceable. And unenforceable, I really just go back to that statute of limitations. It's pretty much the bigger one that I think about. Yes, it could happen because it's ambiguous, unclear, missing essential elements, right? And that's where we can't like enforce something. Because at the end of the day, like if it's unclear, ambiguous, right? Because we have real estate agents that are writing these contracts. Yes, we're using pre-printed forms and that contract has some spaces for some, some writing to be able to go in. Yet, you may look at something and one party reads it one way, another party reads it another way, and then we're relying on a judge. So unenforceable, in my mind, I like to think of the statute of limitations. Let's say that you have a contract and the contract says X. And you say, hey, you know what, I bought the house. And that's really where my mind goes, let's go to a new build. And so you have a new build, and through the new build, you're supposed to get bright white kitchen cabinets. Yet, when the builder got done building the house, they were off-white. All right, you ordered bright white, they give you off-white kitchen cabinets. And they say, hey, you know what, I super apologize, let us order these, we're going to get them fixed. Feel free to move into the house, get settled, we don't want to, we don't want to slow you up there. And we're going to get this taken care of for you, we appreciate your business. So you move into the house and months go by and time just goes. And so it doesn't matter what the time limit is, all the statute of limitations changes for different things. Yet, here's the thing, statute of limitations would turn this into an unenforceable contract. If enough time has gone by to where they can't enforce the contract anymore, right? So void, we're missing something. We know right away, hey, there is something that is an issue. We have a void contract. Voidable, there could be something underneath the water that we're not seeing. And it would take someone to actually raise their hand and say, hey, this actually happened, contract's over. And unenforceable, really, I like to think of the statute of limitations. So questions around this subject. When the buyer had the property inspected, a roofing contractor found leaks and said that it has been leaking for months. If the seller misrepresented the roof, the contract is, it's voidable, right? And it's voidable because of this, duress, fraud, misrepresentation, and the involvement of minors render contracts voidable. In this case, the seller misrepresented the property or engaged in fraudulent behavior. The contract becomes voidable at the buyer's discretion. The buyer may choose to proceed with the sale or terminate the contract. If the buyer decides to terminate, the seller is obligated to return the earnest money. All right, so again, the buyer was lied to, but maybe they love this house and they're getting it for a great deal and they're okay with the roof being in the condition that it is. Yes, they were, it was misrepresented, they were lied to, they could void the contract. They love the neighborhood, they love the house, and they go through with the deal. Your second question, so when we're talking about union acceptance and communication of acceptance, an offer is considered. So we have acceptance and we have communication of acceptance. An offer is considered what? So this is a little bit of a trick question, right? When we're looking at this thing, so when we have offer and acceptance, we have a contract, all right? So if we're looking at this thing, it's now a contract. We have offer and acceptance. So that offer is no longer anything, right? It's not a counteroffer, it's not a void offer, it's not a unilateral offer. The offer has now actually become a contract, because we have offer and acceptance, right? And it says, an offer without acceptance remains incomplete. However, once acceptance is communicated to all parties, the offer, if it is a purchase contract, becomes an executory contract. Valid contracts are both binding and enforceable, all right? So when we are looking at this, this is a little bit of a trick question, because it wants you to go through and say, okay, yeah, we have a valid. But if that would be a valid offer, right, and offer is considered valid. Well, there's no such thing as a valid offer, that's not real. And so you could have maybe accidentally checked B, you probably didn't check counteroffer, you probably didn't check unilateral offer. You may have defaulted on valid, but there's no such thing as a valid offer. There is a valid contract, and yet, as we're going through this, this would actually be a offer becomes a contract, that's where you should have defaulted on this. When we're talking about bilateral and unilateral contracts, the key difference between a bilateral and a unilateral contract in real estate lies in the number of parties involved and their commitment levels, all right? So when we're talking about this, we have a bilateral contract. These contracts involve two or more parties who negotiate, agree upon terms, and are legally bound to fulfill their commitments. Common examples includes a sales contract and listing agreements, right? So when we think about this and we think about it in the terms of bilateral, we have two parties. And so let's just, let's just dumb it down, let's go the smallest we can, let's go two parties. Because that's where I think most of our minds go. We have a buyer and a seller, that's the contract to buy and sell, all right? That's a bilateral contract, they're both agreeing to terms, we have offer and acceptance, bilateral. When we're talking about a unilateral contract, this is just one party making a promise or an offer, while the other party may choose to accept or decline by performing a specific action. All right, so the offerer is legally obligated once the offeree completes the required action. All right, so in terms of real estate, as you may see a question, and it's going to point to an option, right? It's an option contract, that's a unilateral contract. It says like, which one of these is a common example of a unilateral contract? The answer is option. I think you may see a test question that actually reads that way. The best way I can describe this for you guys is this, I want you to picture a lost dog sign, all right? Someone has gone through, they've posted the lost dog on the light post, maybe they put it out on social media, $500 reward, right? $500 reward for bringing back my dog. Here's his picture, if you see him, call this number, I will give you 500 bucks. That's a unilateral contract. So you are not obligated to go look for the dog, right? No one's obligated to go look for that dog. Yet, if you find the dog, you call the number, the offerer has to give you the $500. That's a unilateral contract, and so that's not in the context of real estate yet. I think that's actually very helpful. I think it's very helpful to think of a unilateral contract as a lost dog poster. So, but in the terms of real estate, a legally enforceable agreement, under which both parties promise to do something for each other, is called, obviously, it's a bilateral contract. Bilateral contracts are formed when both parties make mutual promises to each other. An escrow agreement, for example, establishes the conditions for closing a transaction. An option contract, on the other hand, is a unilateral contract, as it involves only one party making a binding promise, which the other party can choose to act upon. All right, so again, I want you to keep in mind, if you get a test question that talks about which one of these contracts is unilateral, the answer is option. 100% of the time, it's option. Your second question, I think that you could see under this section, is a buyer signs a contract that gives them the right to purchase a property at any time in the next six months. This agreement is a unilateral option contract binding the seller only. An option contract grants the buyer the right to purchase the property in the future, but does not obligate them to do so. This agreement allows the buyer to decide later whether to proceed, which creates a unilateral contract, right? Now, if they decide to, if they decide that they're going to do it, right? Because we have a unilateral contract right now. If they decide that, hey, they're going to go through with this deal, then it becomes bilateral, right? We're going to put a contract to buy and sell together, then we have a bilateral contract. But in this case, when only the seller is obligated, right? That's why it says a unilateral option contract binding the seller only. The seller has agreed to the terms, hey, if you find X amount of dollars within X amount of time, I will sell the house. That seller is not allowed to sell the house to anybody else. And if that buyer does bring the money in that time period, they are obligated to sell to that buyer. The buyer's not obligated, the buyer never has to go find the money. Another section, we have termination, rescission, and cancellation of contracts. All right, so termination, rescission, and cancellation are methods of ending a contract, and they all have distinct implications. So termination is this, it ends the contract according to its terms or applicable law. After termination, the contract becomes unenforceable through certain obligations between the parties that may still remain. Recision actually nullifies the contract, as if it never existed, restoring both parties to their positions before the contract. This is often equitable remedy when one party has been harmed due to a breach. And then we have cancellation, a general term that can refer to either termination or rescission, depending on the context. All right, cool. So when I think about termination, the contract comes to an end, and yet, there still could be something, right? Like the buyer still may have to give up earnest money, right? The contract's been terminated, the buyer did not hold up their end of the deal, and now we're going to take their earnest money, all right? But rescission means this, like where I think rescission shows up is maybe the buyer is defaulting again, I do think this is a buyer defaulting situation. And the seller actually has a backup offer that's way better. And just in case, like there could be some dispute and some weird things happening between the current buyer and the seller, they just say, listen, you defaulted on the contract, I'm going to let you out of the contract, I'm going to rescind the contract, and I'm going to give you your earnest money back. And then they had the right to keep it, but yet, they didn't want to go through any legal stuff that could happen, because they got a better deal on the table that they want to pursue. It could happen on the buy side, right? Like maybe the seller at the very, like the finish line, the seller raises their hand and says, you know what? I actually don't want to sell my house, I got too many memories of this house, so I'm not going to sell it. And the buyer actually saw another house that they really liked. They could rescind the offer, right? They say, hey, look, I'm going to let you out, and I'm going to rescind the offer, I'm going to take my earnest money back, and as if the contract had never happened. That's where these two things I think could show up. So termination, there's still some penalties that could happen. Typically, I think it's around earnest money. And when I see rescission, it's one party letting the other out, as long as they all go back to as if the contract had never happened. So two questions around this. What action returns a contract's party to their position before the contract, including the return of any deposits? Well, we just talked about this, this is rescission. Recision occurs when one party nullifies or terminates the contract, treating it as if it never existed, thereby restoring both parties to their original position. Cancellation, however, simply terminates the contract without restoring the parties to their initial conditions. Substitution is an appraisal principle suggesting that a party's value for the property is influenced by the cost of acquiring a similar property, while subordination acts as a place order, indicating that a mortgage or other interest will not take priority over a new recording, all right? Your second question, that I think you could see in this section, mutual rescission is best defined as a dissolution of a contract that returns all funds or things of value to both parties. So mutual rescission occurs when both parties agree to terminate an agreement, returning any funds, property, or items of value to their respective owners. This process effectively undoes the contract, restoring both parties to their original positions. All right, so we got this thing called the e-sign act. And so this section is called the Appropriate Use Risk and Advantages of Electronic Signatures and Paperless Transactions. So what we have is back in 2000, this thing came to federal law, and it's known as the Electronic Signatures in Global and National Commerce Act, which is the e-sign act. And it's a federal law that back in 2000, that granted electronic signatures the same legal status as a handwritten contract. And it applies to transactions impacting interstate or foreign commerce, all right? So this is what it's saying, it's saying, listen, your electronic signature, DocuSign is one of the big ones, has the same weight as if you were to wet sign, all right? So if you're going through and you have physical paper versus electronic, they hold the exact same weight, one of them is not better than the other. The primary objective of the e-sign act was to eliminate obstacles for electronic commerce, simplify the management of signatures and approvals for organizations, and set a federal standard for the legal validity of electronic signatures. And guys, I want you to go back to 2020, we had social distancing. We had people that were not allowed in the same room together, it got weird. The Electronic Signatures Act was one of the things that actually made it a lot easier, right? Because when you think about this, we could do things digitally. We didn't need to be at the closing table together, right? We were able to do things. Think about a seller moving out of state. The seller moves out of state and the closing dates, and then a week from now. Well, the seller's out of state, they're most likely not going to fly back. So what they can do these days, right, is they can actually sign papers electronically. And that signature is, is great. Think about, think about getting an offer at eight, nine o'clock at night, right? Like you have an obligation to get it signed, and we can send them through the computer, get an electronic signature on it. We don't need to be rushing around all over the state to be getting signatures from other parties, right? This is make things a lot simpler. So when we look at this thing, some of the questions, one of the key provisions of the Uniform Electronics Transactions Act, which is the UETA, is if a state law requires a writing record, an electronic record is sufficient. All right, cool. So a key provision of the Uniform Electronics Transfer Act is to grant electronic signatures the same validity as paper-based signatures. So if we're going through and we actually need to have a record-keeping, right? We're talking about statute of frauds for it to be in writing to be enforceable, and we know that we need to have signatures on contracts that we can go through, send the contract digitally, get a digital signature, and it is the same value as if we actually got it all on paper. Another question that I think you could see in this is, the law requires under the e-sign act that all parties agree to conduct the transaction using electronic means. So the e-sign act establishes specific requirements to validate electronic signatures. A key aspect of this act is the necessity for the signer's intent to sign and consent to conduct business electronically, right? They go through, they actually have to click box. So I don't know if anyone's gone through and actually signed anything digitally. But yet, the very first thing that says is, I agree that this has legal weight to it, right? You click okay, then a lot of times, you get to pick what your signature looks like, right? Like you go through and like there's a box that says like, which signature do you want, one through five? Or you want to write your own, right? It gives you all those options. Then at the very end, it says, okay, you click okay, and there's timestamps, it has your IP address. It does all of this stuff to make sure that it looks above board. So huge, right? This is, this has made life easier and I, you're going to get some questions around this under the contract side of things. The nature and use of an option agreement. A real estate option agreement is a contract between a buyer and a seller that grants the buyer the option to buy a property at a predetermined price within a specific timeframe. While the buyer is not obligated to complete the purchase, the seller is restricted from offering the property to others during this option period. So key elements, when we're looking at what an option, we have the optionee and the optioner. The buyer is referred to as the optionee and the seller as the optionor. All right, so real quick, while this isn't on here, I do want you to understand this. Whenever you see EE at the end of any word, that is always the receiver, the recipient. Most of the time, that's the buyer. The OR is always the giver, always. Most of the time, that's the seller, all right? So when we're going through and we're looking at these different things, you could get some questions, and I just always want you to remember, the giver, OR, the receiver, EE, always. It does not matter if we're talking about the optioner versus the optionee, if we're talking about the grantor versus the grantee, if, all these different things. Always, OR giver, EE is receiver. Exercising the option, right? The buyer exercises the option by notifying the seller of their intent to purchase before the option period expires. Cool, right? They got a time limit, they already know what their dollar is, they've been given X amount of days or weeks or months, or whatever that may look like, to go come up with the funding, they come up with the funding, the seller agrees to sell the home. And then we create a new contract. Upon exercising the option, a real estate purchase agreement is formed, obligating the buyer to proceed with the purchase. Cool, so the option, right? We're going through and we're giving them the option, they never have to do anything, ever. They don't ever have to go find the money, they don't ever have to come to the table. Yet, when they raise their hand, they say, I want to go through with this deal. We're going to put a contract to buy and sell in place, we're going to put a sales contract, a purchase agreement in place. That's between the buyer and the seller. They, we know we have a contract, the contract's either going to say what we are going to do or aren't going to do, and then we're going to proceed from there. So here's some questions, right? You might just get an option. So what does an option do? Well, it binds the optionor for a specific time, right? It doesn't give the optionee an agreement or an easement. It does not make the seller liable for a commission, and it does not require the optionee to complete the purchase, right? An option agreement buys the owner, the optioner, to sell the property at a fixed price within a specific time, but does not require the optionee to proceed with the purchase. The option grants the optionee no ownership rights to the property and does not obligate them to complete the transaction. Another question that I think you could see, a seller accepted monetary consideration. The seller to sell their property for X dollars at X time. If the buyer chooses to purchase this contract, this is called? Well, it's an option contract. In an option contract, the seller receives option money and agrees to sell the property for a specific price within a set timeframe, should the buyer decide to proceed within the purchase, which will happen in the future. All right, so when we're looking at this again, this is just national content. This is going to be under the contract section. Yeah, there's way more topics that are going to be under here, but yet, this is the majority of what you're going to see coming through. And so your contract section under your national side of things, And so your contract section under your national side of things is a big, big section that you have. And so hopefully this was helpful. This is what the sections look like as well as what some of the questions may look like as you're going through. Uh, to kind of help you kind of get a grasp of what you're gonna see on this national exam.